One guy, and I don't think I'm him. Last I checked.
You're right.
I call this meeting to order. The Effingham County Planning Board Meeting, March 21st, 2022. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to begin this meeting. We're to word of prayer. We're going to follow the prayer with a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask that everyone would stand for both, please. Wish grace on the Father, we just praise you for this time. We come out and discuss these important issues of Effingham County. We just ask you would be with us through this meeting. Just help us to do what's best for this county. We ask that you would be with our country and just be with this world, Lord. And most importantly, be with our troops to keep us safe in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Teresa, our agenda. Is there anything we need to add or delete from this agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
No changes to the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve this agenda?
Remove.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Smith, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed, motion carried by all. Minutes from February 14th. Any corrections or additions? There are none, I'll call for a motion to approve these minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. All items presented tonight, we presented again, Board of Commissioners Meeting. Do we have a date for that meeting?
The Commission, Board of Commissioners meets the first and third Tuesdays of the month.
Okay. So...
It'll be the 4th or the 5th.
You know what date this agenda will be heard by the Commissioners?
We don't have...
It's not on here.
It's not on there anymore because we were getting caught in confusion with that. It's on the next available agenda. If all goes expected, I will be putting this on the April 5th agenda.
Okay.
Assuming there's nothing tabled or removed.
April 5th? March?
This is the first Tuesday?
Okay.
April 5th.
First Tuesday, April 5th.
So the April 5th meeting? That meeting is also a public hearing. Anything further? I would like to ask that whenever the item is called, that you would come forward to the podium, that you would state your name as well as sign your name for the record. Item number one is a public hearing for Zinni Carmen Rafael. Request to rezone three of 14 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the separation of a home site located at 591 Zitrower Road. This is the 1st district. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you tell us a little bit about your, can you state your name for me, please?
Yes, my name is Zinni Carmen Rafael.
Thank you. And can you tell us the reason for your request?
We are trying to divide it, the home portion from the land to put on sale the 11 acres.
Alright, thank you ma'am.
Should I put my, print my name here?
Could you send your name, please, yes ma'am? Any questions or comments from the board at this time? Ms. Teresa, do you have anything you wish to add?
No, the three acres needs to be rezoned in order to meet zoning district requirements as it'll be less than five acres. So rezoning it to AR2 will take care of that.
Alright, thank you ma'am.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
We have somebody on Zoom.
You have someone on Zoom? Alright, you can tell them to go ahead.
This is Levon Morel. Yes, this is Levon Morel.
That's not him.
Tell him, we'll get back to him. He's a little later on the agenda.
Okay. So is anyone on Zoom for item number one?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Alright, is there anyone to speak against? Alright, I call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two is a sketch plan for Buckle Design Group LLC as agent for Drayton Parker Companies LLC. Request approval of a sketch plan for Parker's Kitchen at US 80 and State Road 17, located US 80, 80 and Georgia Highway 17 South, Zone B3. This is the 1st district.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you all doing this evening?
Doing well, thank you.
Excellent. I'm back before you again with the sketch plan submitted that we've made for the corner of Highway 17 and 80. We went through the rezoning, as you may recall, maybe about two months ago, for the same property. And we're just advancing the process now to go forward towards full civil design so that we can get yet another store built here in Effingham County. I trust that you've had an opportunity to review the site plan. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Alright, thank you. Questions, comments at this time?
Guess the only question I had, I remembered from the rezoning, one of the neighbors was concerned about, you know, it being, the parking and all. But I believe you said that there were some wetlands and all in that area. Did that turn out to be so that they were properly buffered?
Yeah, so at the back, the rear corner of that property, adjacent to that gentleman's property is where our detention facility is on the, which buffers his property from the truck MPDs. So that along with the landscaping that we're going to install in that area, we feel will be adequate buffering.
And I also know, we talked on Highway 17 about the entrances. You have a, it looked to me like you have a right in and out. I mean, a right out and a left out, yes. And then just a right out, is that what it look like? Am I looking at that correctly?
Yes. Is the plan, yep, here we go, I'm gonna step back for a minute if you don't mind. Yeah, so right now on 17, we're planning to have a right in and right out. Actually, it's gonna be full access on 17. We're looking to have a left out as well.
That's right across from Horseshoe Road?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that was intentionally done. We backed that entrance up so that it aligns with Horseshoe Road. And that was done with the guidance of GDOT as well. So this, this plan is under review by GDOT. We've received a waiver already for the right turn taper length on Highway 80. We have our full traffic impact analysis. That's been completed and submitted to GDOT as well for review. So as you know, the way the process works is prior to getting final land development approval from the county, we'll have to obtain GDOT's encroachment permit. So all of those comments that they may come forward with will have to be adequately addressed.
Anything further at this time? Teresa, do you have something you wish to add?
No, that's, that's correct. As far as the GDOT, we, our land clearing permit would be issued only after we've been satisfied with a permit from GDOT and also the Department of Public Health for the septic system.
That's correct.
They're at the intersection though, at 17 and 80, that's a right in, not a left out, right?
That's a right in, that's right. That's right. Further down, we have full access. Yep.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, sir. Sir, could I get you to, could I?
Sure, yeah, let me step.
Give this gentleman the podium, please.
I'm Randy Martin, I live on 7029 Highway 17, right across from where the entrance is going to be. And I, I do have some concerns. As you all are aware, in the county, there is a drain, that community drain that goes down right through there at the, at the upper point, the north point of the property they're talking about. And if, if that gets disturbed or, it's, it's a very fragile drain point goes down through there, then I'm worried that's gonna back up onto my property, several of my neighbor's properties down through there. Another concern is, and I know it's just the fact of moving a bus stop, but there's children in bus stop right there exactly where that entrance is. I'm afraid if they keep the bus stop there, people coming down 17 is gonna look, be paying attention to Parkers and not what's ahead of them as far as the school buses and children standing there, parents. You know, I just got a few more concerns that the property value, not so much other people's, but mine being exactly about 150 feet from the corner of my property to the corner of where Parker's property starts. Just wanted to bring those points up.
Harsh, thank you. And so when you say a drain, is that like a natural drain?
No, that's a county, that's a county drain, it's got an easement through there.
Okay, so it's a ditch?
Yeah, it's a big ditch that, there's a few wells through there back in that, in that community, septic systems back in that community. And if it gets disturbed, and it's, it's a, it's very fragile, it'll back up and get in there to my property and several of the neighbor's properties.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Do you, are you familiar with it?
No, I actually, I'll take that up with our engineer, Mr. Chair, to make sure that we take a hard look at that. And I mean, just so you'll know, we're required by law to retain all of our own stormwater runoff and treat it on-site before discharging it. We're not allowed to increase post-development runoff. So we will take a hard look at that and make sure that we're not adversely impacting any adjacent properties. I'll go out there myself, walk that area and take a look at that so that I understand exactly what the gentleman's talking about. I wasn't aware of the bus stop being there. That's another thing that we will take up with the appropriate entity. I imagine Effingham County School Board or some entity will, will have an interest in making sure that that gets properly taken care of as well. I'd like to get, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to give the gentleman's address.
Sure, if you, you could speak to him after, after this?
Sure, sure. And I feel like there was one other issue that he raised.
He was just concerned about the proximity, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Harsh, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Is there anywhere to zoom in on the map? That y'all can zoom it in to see? Pretty sure there's a 25-foot drainage showing on the site plan right there on that property line, adjacent to where the storm detention's proposed.
Oh yeah, you're right. It goes down the property line?
Right, it looks like it's directly adjacent to it.
Yeah, that, that's the existing ditch.
That's what you're talking about, just to clarify.
Yep.
Alright, thank you. Is there anything further? Ma'am?
Is it possible to get a copy of this map?
A copy of the site plan?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I, I just, I just wanted to ask if there was gonna be...
Can I get you to come to the podium, please?
I'm Tammy West, I live at 7015, right next to Mr. Martin. I was just concerned on if there was gonna be an easement...
Can I get you to speak in that microphone?
Sorry. If there was gonna be an easement of any kind, Randy and I both live very close to the road already. And I'm gonna be having a drain field replaced soon. And it's gonna have to go in my front yard. So I'm concerned about if the road widens, is there any limitation to the drain field being close to the highway?
You mean if Highway 17 widens?
Yes.
He'll, he'll only widen it on his side?
Okay.
Right-hand, right-hand turn lane, probably, I'm assuming.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. We're, there's no plan to acquire additional right-of-way.
Can I get you to speak in that microphone?
There, there's no plan to acquire additional right-of-ways. So whatever expansions or improvements are made within, on 17 will be done within, within the existing right-of-way.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Alright, if there's nothing further, I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the sketch plan.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed, motion carried by all. Alright, thank you. Item three is a public hearing for Alan Fred Hazard Jr. Request to rezone three and a half acres from AR1, AR2 to allow for the creation of two lots under five acres, located at 3535 Noel C. Conaway Road, 2nd District. Is there a representative, Mr. Hazard? Ms. Teresa, could you tell us about this real quick?
Yeah, Mr. Hazard said he couldn't be here tonight. He will be at the Board of Commissioners Meeting, though. So this is a three and a half acre parcel in what's, in a subdivision called Scuffletown Estates. And Mr. Hazard wishes to split this parcel as shown on this plat. In the lower left of the screen is the original Scuffletown Estates subdivision plat. And then the larger on the right is Mr. Hazard's plan to subdivide his own, his three and a half acres into a roughly 1.3 acre and 2.1 acre parcels, two parcels. He'll remove the metal building, it's on the northern tract, and eventually build a home there and sell off the southern tract. And in order to, for staff, or in this case because it's a major subdivision, the chairman would have to sign the subdivision plat. In order for us to sign the subdivision plat, because the parcel, which is currently AR1, it's legal non-conforming in AR1, we would have to bring it into conformance with the zoning district requirements. And so we have to rezone it to AR2, which allows parcels of one acre or more.
Alright, thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Questions, comments from the board?
I see we have that letter from the Department of Public Health. At this level, do they have to look at where their existing field is for the home that's staying on the lot? In other words, is that something they've gone through? Just so they know that that's something they've got to know?
The Department, the Health, the Director of Environmental Health, they haven't done a site visit to this yet. He really is acknowledging the rezoning request and indicating what information would be needed if a building permit and a septic system permit were applied for. So it's really kind of opening a file and in expectation of an application. So it's, there's no guarantee yet that, I mean, there's no reason to be concerned, but there's no guarantee of that being a buildable lot until they've actually done the inspection.
Yeah, I was mostly talking about the creation of the lot line there, just that existing structure to make sure it wasn't some issue with their existing system. But that's fine, as long as they know that process.
Alright, is there anything further? No one else to speak? I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second? Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. Item four is a public hearing for Shelley McCraw. Request a conditional use for rural business located at 238 Griffin's Lake Road, Zone AR1, this is the 3rd district. Is there a representative for Ms. McCraw? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. I'm Shelley McCraw.
Alright, thank you. Can you just tell us a little bit about your business plan?
Sure, we are relatively new to the county. My husband, this is Jared McCraw, just retired from the Marine Corps in the fall. And so we got to come back to the southeast. And all the places that we've lived, there have been preschool age, parent-child preschool programs available. We have, our youngest is a little over a year old. Love the county, really enjoy being here, but I'm finding there's a lack of that kind of programming for the preschool age children. So I'm looking at starting parent-child first music together courses. It's primarily music and movement, getting them school-ready. The classes are just an hour long. Parent comes with child, so it's not a drop-off program by any means. And then eventually, I'd like to also develop a little bit more curriculum to have more of what we had in our military communities where we're doing not just the music classes, but also the, the curriculum. So getting them ready for school. They learn best with their parents, so it's, it's a lot of fun. And I think it's a way that we can get back to the community and a way that the parents can really invest in their children. I am really nervous, I apologize.
There's no need to be nervous.
I didn't realize I was until I started talking.
How many, like, do you plan, what's like the max for a class, for an hour, I guess, per hour?
Amount of students in the course, 10 to 15, 15 being the largest. And I'm looking at doing about one, one-hour class, starting out two to three times a week. So nothing, you know, there won't be a whole lot of traffic or anything like that, just a...
That was the only reason I was asking.
Yeah. And we have the, the facility that we're using is separate from our main residence, so it'll be on the back of the property. So from street, there's probably two to three acres that we can use for parking and that kind of thing. We also have a pole barn that's paved underneath that we'll use for some outdoor classes as well.
Perfect. Any other questions at this time? Ms. Teresa, do you have any comments you wish to make?
Just a little, this is a conditional use for rural business, which is a category we have to allow rural businesses in the rural areas to, to serve the local community. And there are some criteria that we have to look at. So this, we've determined that the proposed business is in keeping with the, the local environment, but because it's relatively low impact, relatively few people coming and going, the structure, the existing structure will be able to accommodate the outdoor classes. Square footage, so neither the area devoted to the business in the house or, or outdoors is more than 1,000 square feet. The public road frontage, that, we can check that box. This is on Griffin Lake Road. And there, it meets the minimum acreage requirements of three acres or more. So staff are recommending approval.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Is there anything further from the board? Call for a motion.
I make a motion for approval with staff recommendation.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Second, all's in favor of approval? Any opposed, motion carried by all. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. McCraw, for your service.
Item five is a public hearing for Levon Morel. Request to rezone 3.84 of 10.15 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the separation of a home site located at 519 Savannah Town Road. This is the 3rd district. Mr. Morel still on the phone?
No, I have a phone number with no name, I don't know if that's Mr. Morel or not.
This is pretty straightforward, Ms. Teresa, can you?
This is, this is, what, 10.5, 1.5 acres? And he wishes to split off 3.84 acres? So that section needs to be rezoned to AR2 because it's less than the five acre minimum for AR1 zoning district.
Mr. Morel, are you there?
Yes, yes, sir, I'm here. Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, it's pretty much, I'm gonna yield 6.31 acres to Mr. Joe Usher. And everything is gonna pretty much stay the same. We, you know, we, in a rural area, it's in a farming and residential area. So that's basically it, you know, nothing, nothing's gonna change. I've been at my residence now for 35 years, so I'm not, I'm not making any changes other than with Mr. Usher, that's it.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm wondering if he's gonna combine that land with the neighbor's property, is that...
It's my understanding that the 3.84 acres to be rezoned contains the home, the existing home, and then the six acres is to be sold.
That'll be, that'll be left in AR1.
Yeah, that stays in AR1.
Alright, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yeah, this is, this is Joe Usher. We are adjoining property owners and just be adding it to, to that land. So we're definitely in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Questions, comments from the board? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Thompson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Thank you, Mr. Morel, Mr. Usher. Item six, the public hearing for Katie. Let's see, if anyone's come in since this meeting started for Backwater Expedition, that, that item is not going to be heard tonight. Item six, the public hearing for Katie McGory, McGory, I'm sorry, Brown. Request a conditional use for a rural business located at 716 Floyd Avenue, Zone AR1, this is the 3rd district. Is there a representative here tonight for Mrs. Brown? She's on? Alright, so could you ask her to explain her business to us, please? Can she hear me?
She can hear.
She can hear?
Hi, good evening. You can hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. My name is Katie McGory Brown. I'm a mental health counselor, play therapist in the community. I've been in Effingham County for over 12 years. Did you receive my letter that I submitted? Just to check in?
Yes.
Okay, what I'm wanting to do...
Yes, ma'am, we did.
Okay, wonderful. I have discovered the wonderful use of including horses in therapeutic mental health sessions. So when I found this property at the end of last year at Floyd Avenue, it has the potential to provide everything I need to offer that, the counseling with the horses, mental health counseling and coaching to the Effingham County. To my knowledge, there is no other mental health therapist located in Guyton. And so I would love to be approved and be able to offer mental health counseling and working with the horses on the ground, doing counseling sessions with children, adults, possibly the military. I'm actually in Nevada. I just finished a certification program with EGALA, which trains mental health professionals on how to continue the work with counseling with horses. And so I should be certified in the next day or two. And so what questions do you have for me?
Alright, questions or comments at this time? Ms. Teresa?
The only concern that we would have, I think, is the size of the, the amount of square footage devoted to the entire activity, both indoor and outdoor. And so in looking at our ordinance, we have a 1,000 square foot limit on combined area for indoor and outdoor. So the, we were looking at it before as two separate spaces, but the ordinance is pretty clear that when, when it's both indoor and outdoor, we have to look at the 1,000 square foot limit. So that isn't necessarily a deal breaker, but we wanted to discuss that. Can you talk a little bit about your outdoor space and how it is currently sectioned off? Is it fenced? Can you tell us about that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I sure can. So we have 7.8 acres on the property, and we had a large area fenced in professionally. And then we've made a smaller area using the fencing, the electric fence. And that would be the area where I would have the horse and the client work with me in that area. And that's the one that's 1,200-ish square feet, or 11, 11 to 1,200 square feet outside. And so that would be, it's outside of the fenced area, and that would provide enough space to work safely with a horse. space to work safely with a horse.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brown.
I just want, one question, so are you saying it, it would be impossible to do this with any less square footage?
Not necessarily.
All right.
No, if it was needed, I could definitely, um, you know, make it smaller.
I mean, what Ms. Concanon's saying is our ordinance only allows for one thousand feet under this rural business, so we're just trying to figure out
Honor that.
If, if you can work in a thousand square feet, um, operate, if you can operate your business in, in that area. I guess if not, she could possibly apply for variance to enlarge it, or?
Right, depending on how you all vote, recommend, make, what recommendation you all make tonight, and then what the Board of Commissioners decides, based on whether, if they're generally approving, but we need to, you know, do some housekeeping and, and clean up the uh, the application, that, the, the remedy there would be to get a variance from the ordinance requirements, but we, we're not entirely sure that's necessary, but we may talk to you tomorrow about some, you know, about getting that paperwork in the pipeline. So we'll see what the board does here tonight.
So I guess at present, we're looking at a thousand square feet total use.
The ordinance does say a thousand square feet indoor and outdoor total, yes.
What's the eleven hundred equine?
That's what she's planning to use.
Yeah, she, she submitted eighteen hundred total square feet.
Right.
In the front of my house, I have an office and a playroom. Um, some of my clients do not do the equine counseling.
Right, so there's about two hundred square foot in the house where you do the therapy, uh, and if you add the equine aspect, it's about, it's up to eleven hundred square foot outside in addition, so two hundred plus eleven, is that, we're looking at thirteen hundred square feet total. So if there were a variance needed, then that would be for, you know, just three hundred feet.
Can't we just make a stipulation that she's allowed to have a thirteen hundred square feet?
No, not without a variance.
Without a variance?
Not without a variance.
Oh, not without a variance.
We approve it tonight.
On the condition that a variance is applied for and approved?
Or that she stays under a thousand square feet?
Correct.
Right.
Would it have to come back to us for the variance, or they could do that at the?
No, it would come back through.
Yeah, it'd have to come back through the process.
A variance or tweak?
Yeah, or, yeah, I mean, a variance or, or changing of the, you know, if we, if we so find a problem with the ordinance, then it gets changed, then she automatically's...
Right, so we, as I said, we could, we could start the paperwork tomorrow, and I think we can include it in our next batch. So the timing works in, in your favor, that we, you know, we could, just as a preemptive move, go ahead and get a variance application in the pipeline, and so when this goes to the Board of Commissioners on April fifth, um, assuming we, you know, we could either delay it, or we could bring it on April fifth, um, we can tell them that the variance is in the, in the works, and that will be, you know, they'll factor that into their decision.
Okay.
So I guess Ms. Brown, to try to put some clarity on this, I mean, I don't remember ever a situation where a rural business had an indoor and an outdoor portion, most of them are either one or the other, so the fact that you have both has kind of made the math, we realized the math didn't work, and you're, you're larger than what the ordinance allows, so um if you choose to proceed tonight, we can only approve you to use a thousand square feet. And then if you say you need more, then there can be some more um applications or paperwork that you, some, some future approvals can possibly may, be made to give you your, I believe, thirteen hundred feet that you're asking for. But tonight, we can only do a thousand square feet, because that's what our ordinance says, it's a total for indoor and outdoor.
Okay. Okay, so I think that would be difficult to stay at the one thousand square feet, and really offer um quality services that are gonna benefit the, the community and the citizens of Effingham County. So what do I need to do next?
I would say, tonight, you, you, if I were, I believe, say, I would like to get my thousand square feet approved, so I can get started.
Okay.
And then request to, to be larger.
Okay, that sounds great. And is that the variance y'all are talking about?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is that fair, Teresa? Okay, all right. So just so we're clear, we'll be voting on a thousand square feet, and, and then in the future, we'll talk about some additional space.
Thank you, yes.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? All right, if there's nothing further, I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion for approval um with the um ordinance of a thousand square feet, in hopes that the, uh, she'll come back for a variance.
All right, there, do I hear a second?
No, second.
Second, is there any discussion on this motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Thank you, ma'am. Item seven, is a public here for Jonathan Yates, his agent for Donald A. and Lynn M. Wester, request to rezone thirty-eight point four nine five acres from R one to AR one, located at twenty-eight hundred Little McCall Road, this is the fourth district. Is there a representative, let's see, Mr. Yates, is Mr. Yates, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board, Jonathan Yates. Um, here actually for two items, uh, first a rezoning, and then a conditional use for a tower. First and foremost, I just have to say, I do this work all over the southeast, and I want to thank Ms. Teresa and Ms. Katie. I asked, I, the last time I was here, RC Banachek was the planner, so I'd been away for a while. I asked a hundred and one stupid questions, they never laughed at me, and they always treated me with the utmost professionalism. What we're hoping for tonight, and two applications before you, uh, this is the property of Don and Lynn Wester, uh, it's about thirty-eight and a half acres, right off of Little McCall Road. And what we're hoping to do with your recommendation, and then the Commissioner's approval, is put in a facility for AT&amp;T. It's designed for AT&amp;T, uh, and three additional broadband carriers. I was out that way this afternoon, and it was actually a pleasure for me, 'cause no one could get me on my phone. I sort of liked it, I sort of liked to be away from it for a while. Also with this facility, a little different in addition, this will be, facility will also accommodate AT&amp;T's First Responder Network Authority, or FirstNet, uh, which is a health and safety nationwide network for first responders, and so this will carry a lot of load. Uh, Don really offered, there is no textbook for cell towers, but if there was, this site would be in there. It's uh thirty-eight and a half acres, incredible, incredible tree cover. We were able to position ourselves where we were twelve hundred feet off of Little McCall Road, make all the setbacks. Don bought this property about two years ago, and he, he and his wife put in a house and a little workshop on the property. He offered us really the perfect location from a zoning standpoint, but also the perfect location from AT&amp;T's standpoint for what they need to cover in that area. And again, uh, the height is designed for AT&amp;T, FirstNet, and also space for three additional broadband carriers when they want to solve their issues in that area. I'm here for any and all questions, I also have Mr. Tom Winesky of Diamond Communications, who headed up our development team on this, and I can talk about all kinds of crazy things. Uh, one thing to get you feel, um, it's not easy doing communication towers. A lot of work goes in beforehand. In this case, we had to go to the FAA, and the FAA approved it with a determination of no hazard air navigation. We went to the Georgia Historic Preservation Division, they also approved it, uh, that it'll have no effect on any national registered properties in the area. In addition, and you may or may not know this, this had to be reviewed by twelve Native American organizations. This had to be reviewed by the Catawba Indian Nation, the Cherokee Nation, the Eastern Shawnee Tribe of Oklahoma, the Porch Band of Creek Indians, Seminole Nation of Oklahoma, Alabama Quarside Tribal Town, the Kushtah Indian Tribe, the Kealegi Tribal Town, the Muskogee Creek Nation, Seminole Tribe of Florida, Shawnee Tribe, and the local tribal town. So before I got to these great people, Teresa and Katie, a lot went into this. We're here for any and all questions, I know you have a busy agenda, but a, ask away.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yates. Any questions at this time, I mean?
So right now, we're just talking about the zoning.
Just to be clear, yes, I mean, we can talk about both, but it'll be two separate votes, I mean, obviously, it'll be a vote for uh rezoning of the property, and then the second vote will be for conditional use, so we'll go ahead and talk about both at, at the same time.
And I apologize, board member, I sort of jumped ahead.
It's fine, it's fine, we, we can, we, might as well cover it all at one time. So, any?
So, can we go back to that, uh, one that had the site plan there that showed the relationship to the road? Walk, walk me through the setbacks and how the tower's constructed. Um, I see that there's multiple options in, in the code, our code, for the setbacks based off of what type of tower it is, and where a breakaway point is, and I'm just putting myself in the, the shoes of the two people that are, I'm saving two, the two property lines that that tower's the closest to, so I wanted to uh understand that a bit better. I, I see the, the, the large setbacks to the existing structures, but I'm just curious what happens if somebody puts a structure adjacent to that property.
And I thank you, sir. Uh, setbacks come in a variety of flavors, in this case, we were able to achieve some pretty impressive setbacks, uh, seven eighty-one to the north, two twenty-eight south, um, excuse me, seven fifty-one north, two twenty-eight south, seven eighty-nine east, and two thirty-one west, I got two of them inverted. The key you look for here is what the tower is designed, and we have in front of you, uh, this is sealed by Georgia Professional Engineer Amy R. Hurst, where she puts into the tower what is called a breakaway portion, in this case, at half height or a hundred and thirty feet. We have to be one point two times the breakaway portion, portion to any property line. In this case, that would require a setback of a hundred and fifty-six feet. The additional setback is when you're on a lot with another principal use, and you're doing what we call, this is called a self-support or a lattice-style tower, you have to be the greater of twenty percent of tower height or twenty-five feet. In this case, we're four hundred and forty-seven feet away from Mr. Don and Ms. Lynn's house, and so it would require a setback of fifty-two feet, but we're four hundred and forty-seven away. So in each case, we were able to meet all the setbacks.
So if I can interrupt you, those setbacks you're talking about, those are whose? Those aren't county, those aren't county calculations, are they?
Well, this design, uh, Ms. Cher is designed into the tower, it, uh, the ordinance provides for what they call a breakpoint, and that should be one point two times the distance from the breakpoint to the top of the tower. In this case, the breakpoint's at a hundred and thirty feet.
Right.
So that would come out to be a hundred and fifty-six feet.
So what triggers the break?
It is designed into the pole itself, it is designed, what Ms. Hurst did, is she has to design it to the NCTIA two twenty-two H standard of a hundred and twenty-nine mile per hour wind speed, and it's almost like, and I promise not to break this, but I'll use this as an example, you beef up the base, it's like creating a tree trunk with the steel on the base, you overdesigned the base, so it's designed, when a catastrophic five-hundred year event, you have a, a breakpoint designed in where the base remains. We have seen, the biggest first test, for me, uh, was after Hurricane Katrina in Louisiana, Mississippi, where we saw that when these towers are designed to the NCTI latest standards, they pretty much stay up, no matter what the wind. Where we lost towers down there is when a, a missile, a section of a bridge or a boat was airborne, and sort of hit them straight on. But that's the purpose here, Ms. Hurst designs in what is called the breakpoint, and she has to certify that, and she also designs it to the NCTIA two twenty-two H standard, designing for the hundred and twenty-nine mile per hour wind speed.
Yeah, my concern is, the property owner that's two hundred and twenty-eight feet away, and the tower is two hundred and sixty feet tall?
Yes, sir.
If it don't fail according to her plan, and it fails, and it falls, and they build their house, the adjacent property owner builds a house on their land with a twenty-five foot setback, the tower could potentially fall on the house. That's the issue I have with it. And I know that's, it was designed, and it was designed in a perfect world, and if everything happens according to the design, that's wonderful, but what happens when it don't?
What hap, and you're exactly right, sir, we have not seen them not happen when they don't, when they're designed, overdesigned to their standard, but that is concerned, obviously, they would be. And one thing to keep in mind, Commissioner, the wind event that they could take this tower down, there's not gonna be anything else out there. This, with the overdesign of this tower, with the foundations that are put in place, what, whatever could affect this tower is gonna take any house away, that kind of thing before it. Going to, back to my Katrina story, the tower stayed up, but you had bridges and boats airborne. I understand your concern, but if you look at most ordinances, they have the standard of what either called a breakpoint, or some of them call it a fall zone, where you certify what could happen in a catastrophic situation. Now, anything man certifies, God can change, I know that, but it is highly, highly unlikely.
So if it, if it's two hundred and twenty-eight feet from the line, why couldn't it be moved to two hundred and sixty feet from the line?
We had to work on this property, uh, we had some wetland issues, there's some wetlands around there, which is one of the interesting things about the property that comes up in the staff report, this is likely all there's gonna be on the property. You have Don and Lynn's house and shop, and then you have the tower. So we had to sort of work with the wetlands and get it as, as close as we could, again, keeping it away from their house, and again, trying to get the setbacks in place off the road also. The closest residence to the property is on Brian Logan's property up to the north, it's about a thousand sixty-eight feet away, and prior to agreeing to this, Mr. Don went and talked to Brian to make sure he was okay before he did it. So the closest existing residence is a thousand sixty-eight feet away to the north.
And, and I understand, and I'm, and I'm good with that, but I'm looking out for the property owner who owns the property on the other side, who hasn't yet built anything, who may want to build a house at some time down in the future. That's my question, why it couldn't be moved thirty-two feet where he didn't have an issue?
We went through a lot of positioning with the wetlands, and that's one issue, too, and I'm not certain if those wetlands might go over onto the next property where that might not be possible anyway, 'cause we, this was a tough, it was a great site from where it was for what AT&amp;T needed to do, but tough positioning with the wetlands. My understanding, this property was originally gonna be something called the cottages, where they were gonna build it out as single family, that changed, I, I bet the wetlands had a play in that. But again, and I'll have to ask Ms. Teresa, 'cause I do not know, i- if I may ask Teresa or Katie a question, if the jointing property did build, they couldn't build right up to the property line, could they?
No, there is a setback in the AR, I, there's a setback in the AR one zoning district, so it'd be twenty-five feet from the property line, I mean, I'm looking at it close here, and granted, I can see it closer than most people, but, uh, you know, there is a, a, looks like a power line easement running down the back of the property, so, yes, it's entirely possible someone would pick a, pick a, pick a port, a, a, a site that is outside of the power line easement, um, and fif, twenty-five feet from the side property line, I, I think that would actually pull them further away than, 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 than either the fall zone or even the, the tower height, but if you want, I can switch over to a wetlands layer, it'll take me a minute to get that up, just so we can look at what, what the adjacent property is.
So we're two, how many feet off the property line?
Two. Two twenty-eight.
Two twenty-eight, and the guy wires, how, where are the guy wires located? Are they in this little circle?
No, sir, this is, this is what we call the lattice or self-support, it's the three-sided steel, so no guy wires.
No guy wire.
No guy, so we don't have that coming out. And again, that was another, you know, portion of the county ordinance, so I say, where possible, do the, do the lattice self-support, the free standing for visually versus the guy wires, so we follow that dictate.
All right, now, this is the National Wetlands Inventory, which, um, often with delineation will, will shrink a little bit, uh, so, and, and in fact, we know it, it isn't that extensive, 'cause we know that the house is not built in the wetlands, 'cause we do have a letter from the Corps of Engineers to that effect. So it's likely that the wetlands are not as extensive as shown, this is a generalized layer, however, it does show that there are wetlands immediately to the south, and it's likely, um, again, given very inexpert testimony here, sometimes we do see that the, the color of the trees and the aerial photography will give us an indicator that there's a difference, and if you turn off the layer right now, you'll see that. I'm gon, I, I would look at this as a non-expert and say, I wonder if there's something different about that, I bet it's wetlands. Now, it hasn't been delineated, you know, we're not talking about the neighbor, but it's likely that, that there's, there's some wetlands extending into the southern property there. So it's also possible that when those adjacent property owners come to us with a building permit application, we would say, you have to give us a delineation of that land before we can review that building permit. So it's not entirely, it's not clear that we would be able to approve a building permit within, you know, any close distance to that property boundary. But we wouldn't know until we have the delineation in hand.
Can I just ask, just another question though, related to the, all right, so we've got 460-something feet, is that right, from the existing residence?
Four forty-seven.
Forty-seven. And what's the, what is, what is our code saying we have to be from that house setback-wise?
Uh, there's two parts of the code that we can look at. One is the, uh...
Wait, I guess, so you don't have to get specifics. I guess my question is, is there room within that setback to be able to slide it closer to the existing structure on the, on the property to get us off this property line that I think you recognize that some of us are concerned with? That, that would be the question I would have. And again, I know we're talking rezoning and we're talking, you know...
And it was my fault I merged them.
Yes, sir.
Right. I'm just saying, I, I just wanted to understand if there was, because I just think hearing, hearing the concern, and I, I guess I just also would want to follow up to make sure that there's not a site plan or a plan approval here that would affect, you know, wetlands or not, somebody's ability to build on their property adjacent, so.
Working with the property owner, working with the wetlands, this thing got jockeyed around a good bit, you know, when we were doing it. And we really ended up right here where he, not, not only it worked for the wetlands, but Don was happy with it. And, you know, again, board member, all we can do is study your code. And this one, while a perfect site from where it was, the 38 and a half acres of all that tree cover, the wetlands, it was tough jockeying, but at the end of the day, we were able to get it where it did meet the code. And that's, that's, that's what I'd ask. Because again, across the rear, you have the power line easement, possibly the wetlands on the other side. And you would have even without them, a 25-foot setback on that other side. My closest is two twenty-eight. That's, you know, what are we talking, 30, you know, 32 some odd feet? Most of it's picked on the setback from the other side anyway.
Yeah, I mean, good point. I mean, I believe you've done everything that you're supposed to do to meet our code. Sounds like some of us have maybe some discussion about our code after this.
Yes, sir.
Is there any further this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, sir. We may have some questions, comments for you in a moment. Thank you, sir.
Property owner around this thing, all I'm interested in is...
Mr. J, Mr.? Mr. Jaden, Mr. Jaden? Hey, Mr. Jaden, could I get you to speak into that microphone, please, sir?
Yeah, I just, my property is around his.
Yes, sir.
Y'all were talking about power line, that Southern Natural Gas line that...
Gas line.
They go on there rather than power line. But anyhow, I'm just trying to get at the footage of what he's going to be off of, off of my line, where he's talking about wetlands down there, I swear, eleven, he's a creep. Landline's in the middle of the creek.
He's going to be 228 feet off of your property line.
All right. You're two twenty-eight in here.
Two twenty-eight and seven eighty-nine to that corner right there.
Yeah, okay, well, that's, that's fine. You said four forty-seven to my house.
Oh, no, that was to Don's house.
Oh, right, okay.
So two twenty-eight here and then seven eighty-nine to that corner piece right there.
And what you got from back there?
Two thirty-one.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's all I had. Y'all sent me a letter and I wanted to, I didn't know anything about it, in other words, to see whether it was going to put it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jaden. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Anything further from the board? Any more discussion? All right, I'm calling for a motion. This is on rezoning only, rezoning 38.495 acres from R1 to AR1. I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Mr. Thompson, all this in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried by all. Item eight, public hearing for Jonathan Yates. His agent for Donald A. and Lynn M. Wester requests a conditional use to allow for a telecommunications tower located at 2800 Little McCall Road, Zone R1. Let's see, from, that's the proposed zoning to AR1. So we just approved rezoning to AR1. Now he's asking for a conditional use to put a telecommunications tower. Mr. Yates, do you have anything to add to your previous comments?
No, sir. Only here for any and all questions. Again, thanks to the staff. It's not an easy ordinance. It was tough to get there to the finish line, but I feel we do. But we're here for any and all questions the board may have.
All right, thank you.
Also, I, I did take the liberty, if I may approach the board. I don't know if you've handled a FirstNet site before. I took the liberty of printing out the little questionnaire by FirstNet and what that does.
Would you give that to Ms. Teresa, please, sir?
Yes, sir, I will.
All right, actually, you can give it, Mr. Yates, Ms. Katie wants it.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have anything further?
I do not, sir.
You do not. Questions or comments at this time? Anyone else wish to speak? I recall for a motion on the conditional use to allow for a tower.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Zipper, all this in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Thank you, gentlemen. Item nine is a public hearing for Onsite Truck Maintenance LLC. His agent for William Henry Webb requests a conditional use to allow for a semi-truck service business located 1105 Steel Oil Road. This is the fourth district. Showing fifth district.
Yeah.
Sir?
Fifth.
Fifth? Let's see.
It's the fourth district. I'm sorry, there was a typo on the staff report.
Fourth. You win.
I know I did. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Donnie Flores. I'm the owner of Onsite Truck Maintenance. I've been in business since 2014 in Port Wentworth. But the port expansion is actually make us move up to the, from the area so that make us, you know, to find a different location where we can continue running our business. Been in this business, like I say, since 2014, dealing with a lot of trucking companies on the port and doing all kind of DOT inspections and maintenance and light repairs. And this is a well-known business for all the trucking companies around this event area. But we're trying to move to the Epping Camp County, actually, now live in the area. It's going to be real close to my house, house. And then that's the reason we're trying to find a better location. It is a growing area, which is really good. And we're trying to bring that kind of business to this area if it's allowed. And I'm here if you have any questions, you know, because like I say, we're not a new business. We've been in business since 2014.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donnie. I'll open the floor up for questions, comments at this time. Can you?
Are y'all currently operating out of the building?
No, we're not operating right now. We're just doing mobile repairs for right now. Because we actually, they're, they're tearing down the, the former building where we were conducting our business.
All right. Is, is there a, another, like a dump truck facility next, next to y'all's?
There are dump trucks parked right there, but that's...
But that's not y'all's building?
That's not our business.
Are y'all going to be accessing the same road that the dump truck?
Yes, sir. We're going to be accessing from the same road.
So that's not on the property that y'all are going to be using?
It's on the property. We're going to split it. We're going to have a separate area for our parking spaces. Actually, on the contract that we want to make, the property owner, we're going to allow to have at least from eight to 10 trucks, which is pretty much, you know, the normally parking spaces that we normally use because our business is, is more like, you know, a quick loop, you know, in and outs. We don't keep that many trucks parking on the spaces. And then that's, that's the reason we don't have that big parking space.
But you're going to build a building there, aren't you?
The building is already there.
You're going to use the existing shop, fab shop, repair shop?
He was intended to use that building first, you know, for the part sales and the storage. But now we're going to convert it to a repair shop. We're going to add more doors and access base and, and electricity because there's no power in there yet.
Ryan, did you have something?
Yeah, I guess, and you answered the question a bit about the site plan because there was a, I guess, a site plan submitted, but to me, it would like the survey of the existing property. I mean, obviously, there are going to be other improvements you're planning to make around the building.
Yes, sir. We got to build an office and then a reception area for our customers.
But then how about related to the site? Because the site is what the general public's going to see driving up and down the road. So like, from a standpoint of what, tell me what this facility is going to look like when you're fully operational? If I'm driving down Steel Oil Road, what will I see?
Well, it's going to pretty much stay the same. We're just going to add on like a side office or we're going to get like a renter, a mobile office, one of those office, the new trailer office that you rent and then they hook up everything in there. And then that's pretty much what it's going to look like.
And I, and I understand that part about the, the buildings themselves, right? But to make, to, if I'm understanding the business correctly, there's going to be things happening, maybe not the work happening outside, but at least staging the trucks until they're ready to go in to be worked on or whatever the case may be. I guess of this, I can't remember how big the total property is, but you'll, you'll be utilizing the entire property for, for the business?
Excuse me, sir?
Be u- using the entire acreage of the property?
We, no. We're just going to use pretty much the building, inside the building, under the roof. And then the outside is just going to be for parking purposes, actually just going to be a space like I told you, from eight to 10 park, parking spaces until we get the trucks ready to work inside, inside the building.
So those parked trucks will remain behind the building where you, you've listed unpaid parking area?
I think he, he going to find the best location because he got those dump trucks that he's also renting parking spaces because that's the only thing that they're doing in there. So he probably will find the best location for us to park our customer trucks and his, these are the trucking company who's already there. But to me, it looks like it's going to be parked on the front side of the, our building.
So your customer comes in and I've got to have my tires fixed or I've got to have the turbo done on the diesel. So you, it's a pretty fast turnaround. He's not going to be there for a month.
Oh, no, sir. Not really. Because actually, as the names say, it's a truck maintenance. But we do those kind of repairs. Like you say, if somebody comes, you know, with a broken turbo, actually, they're building a truck stop real close to that property. And I know most of the, the times, you know, the people on the truck stuff call us for quick maintenance people because they don't have time, you know, to, to go to a, those bigger, you know, dealership to get repairs and things like that done. Minor electrical problems or turbos, like you say. Or sometimes they just stop by and therefore air leaks and tires or maintenance. But major repairs, even, even if we had to do like a cylinder head job, is something that it normally takes, you know, from six to eight days. But that's the reason we always work under the roof because we cannot work, you know, something outside the roof for those kind of things, if we had to do it.
I see. I see.
Can I ask a question of staff?
Yeah, Teresa, you, would you like to put your comments in first?
Sure. We met with Mr. Flores and it's, it's, this is a, one of those proposed uses that really isn't accommodated by our ordinance, but that's not uncommon. The ordinance was written, couldn't anticipate every use. So what we tried to do was find a way for you to move forward and two options. One would be to rezone to a more intensive use that, that would be more logical or to keep the existing B2 general commercial district zoning and then ask for a conditional use. And that's, that's the route you, you took. Because our ordinances, let me see, B2 conditional uses include commercial parking areas and automobile service, which is close. B3 includes automobile sales, service and storage and automotive paint and body shops, which is maybe close, but not really.
Never done body work.
It's a little more intensive, but, but it's, but it's still only talking about cars. The only time we talk about trucks in the ordinances is in the, in the context of freight terminals and that's now been moved to industrial and that's not, I mean, that's, this is not the same thing. There's not room to do a freight terminal. So we didn't anticipate that was the issue. The concern we had though, so, so we understand what you're doing and we understand that the area has activity now with trucks and with the grain export business. The concern we had though was that for B2, it real, it is a very intensive use. And so staff are recommending denial, but if the boards were to go ahead and approve it, we would expect to have you come back through for additional review and to talk about how the site would be set up and, and the driveway construction because it's not clear from the site plan submitted what, what driveway you're planning to use. The existing driveway off to the side, to the left of your, the parcel, there appears to be a driveway where people are coming in on the left side of the pond. So is that the proposed access? Or are you planning to build a driveway straight to the structure along that line shown on the site plan?
They want it straight to the structure.
All right. So after review, staff determined, staff recommended denial. That is subject to the, the boards asking questions and learning more information. So we stand where we are, but, but you all have the opportunity to ask more questions tonight.
Wait, Ryan.
Ms. Teresa, I don't really see a problem with the zoning on it, but the, the driveway is, is, is that an issue with them using it since it's on that adjacent property with the zoning for that?
You know, and...
Because it's not even zoned for business over there that's an active business already, correct?
No, on, on that side, it's not zoned for business at all. In fact, nothing on that side of the, the parcel with the star in it, seven acres, was zoned in 2006 to B2 for ag, tractor equipment and tractor and equipment sales. The, the only similar case we've had recently where a commercial business was going to operate using a private road, we did require that they get an easement from the owner and that'd be a recorded easement. So that's something to consider. You could also, of course, just build a driveway from Steel Oil Road, straight back to that building or, you know, on whatever route you choose to the building. And that way, there's no easement involved. But if you're using exist, adjacent property, but it's all under the same ownership. This is the Webb ownership. You're not buying it, you're leasing it.
You have an agreement with Mr. Webb to use that road to the left of the pond to access the property that you're leasing from him?
No, just they want it straight. But we, if we had to make a change, you know, I don't think we should have any problem with that. But since, you know, we were, we're expecting to use the same one than the trucking company is already using because it's already there. And, you know, they're being using that, you know, for, you know, for a good time. So that's the reason I don't think it should be a problem with that. It's something that's already been used in for semi-trucks and dump trucks. Probably make some improvements, but other than that, it's a good role.
So you're looking to purchase this property?
No, I'm just going to make a lease and rent and then we want to talk a little bit more about it because I've just moved out from the other property. So we didn't have that much time, you know, to...
So, I mean, just to be clear, I mean, you estimate eight to 10 trucks will be present at any time, but no more than that?
No, sir. Yeah, because those trucks, the eight to 10 trucks is going to be the parking trucks outside, but we're going to be working on truck outside. Then we're going to rotate trucks going in, out, trucks finished, go to parking lot. Because that's the way we operate. Because this is the same way, you know, we operate all these years on our previous location on Grain Road. So we already got that operation and we've been doing this, you know, for several years. So we know how to handle it. And that's, that's the way we've been operating. This is nothing new for us that we want to try and see if it works, something that we already know. That's the way we work. And we want to continue taking care, you know, the same customers that we, we've been dealing with.
How many trucks do you estimate can get in that building to be worked on? Because you've got a holding panel.
At least six trucks.
Six, six total trucks?
Yes.
Six inside, 10 outside?
This is, applicant estimates that eight to 10 trucks will be present at any time.
In this holding yard.
Outside.
Ms. Teresa?
Which one is it?
What is the zoning on the property that the road is on that they're using?
This is the zoning map for the area. The parcel we're talking about is the blue one with the yellow and red star. Just southwest, there is a subdivision. That royal blue is actually a cell tower. And then... And then to the left and then to the right, that medium blue is B3. And that's the, I, it's the, it's the store across from the grain export. I'm not sure of the name of it.
But where, where the star is, that's the site that he's using, right?
That's the parcel we're talking about tonight. Yes, it is already zone B2.
To the left of the star.
That is AR1.
AR1. So that's where they're going in and out.
So he's going to have to construct a 30-foot vegetative buffer?
If approved, we are, you know, our normal procedure is to require a sketch plan. And yes, a 30-foot vegetative buffer is required between commercial and ag or residential uses. We would require more information about water sewer service, access management, planned improvements, buildings, mobile office.
So it'll be buffered. If, if approved, it will have a 30-foot buffer, vegetative buffer?
If approved, we will need a sketch plan that shows that and we would need that to be, we would need the owner and/or applicant.
Will it be around four sides or three sides?
Uh, three sides. The driveway is, does not, the, the, the side that touches the road where the driveway is located, that goes down to 10 foot. And that can be just, that can be landscaped.
And you're aware of all that? No. Did, did, did you just understand what we just said? I mean, it will have to be a 30-foot vegetative buffer constructed or all the way around the property. Three sides.
Well, why isn't that in effect right now? I mean, that, that building is being used.
Yeah, this property is not zoned for this use. I don't know if it predates the zoning ordinance. It's not actually zoned for commercial or industrial or any use other than ag residential. The grain export business can, I suppose arguably, be considered an agricultural business and therefore it farm operations. I'm not sure of the history of it. That's not something that's come before us.
It was before zoning.
Yeah, we, we don't have a record of, of any application.
That, that grain elevator, all that was pre-zoning, I'm sure. It's been there my whole life.
You hit on exactly what I always want to make sure of is like, just because the use is approved, there's still other standards on that piece of property that the property will have to meet. Access points, buffers. I know there's, I know it's a field around it right now, but there's going to be, there's going to be expenses there to bring that site up. It is zoned, you know, I was actually a bit surprised by the zoning until I heard the, the background by it and seeing some of the adjacent uses that are operating. I can kind of understand that. But that there are, that a conditional use, the sketch plan or the site plan, again, that's why I went back. To me, that was just a survey of kind of what's there right now, right? So that's when I, when I saw that, I thought, is, is this is intent to really just keep it exactly how it is right now? Because that, that won't be possible underneath the code, so.
Any further discussion at this moment?
There are two people on the telephone with, look like they want to speak.
All right.
I'm going to ask the 704 phone number.
Mr. Don, you can sit down for a moment.
Okay. 704 phone number?
Uh, yes, this is Sharon Holland with my mother, Beth Zettler. She's the 3539 number. We're the adjacent property owners across the street. Uh, we were not aware that the property had been rezoned to B12, or B2. What year was that?
2006.
That it was rezoned?
It was rezoned in 2006.
2006, I'm sorry, I missed you. You broke up.
2006.
2002, 2006. Okay, well that's. And we are certain that this property, this request was part of the business that was being run over there now, which sounds like is an illegal business that's being run across the street now. It's Mitchell, Mitchell and Sons. And I'm sitting here looking at seven dump trucks and two semis now. That are quite the disruption to the area. Their driveway is directly across from my mother. They operate at five o'clock in the morning, which interrupts her sleep. Not to mention all the dust that has been kicked up and has already resulted in one hospitalization and breathing problems. So we strongly object to the current business associated there apparently illegally and to any additional other than an agricultural type business.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Okay, uh, 754 number, you're up. If you would unmute your phone, please?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, or ma'am.
I think that was her on with her mother-in-law, I think she said. Okay.
That was Sharon and her mother, Ms. Beth Zettler.
Okay, I've asked them to unmute twice, so.
All right, if there's a 754 number on for the on-site truck maintenance, could you unmute your phone and speak, please? All right, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak either in favor?
Okay.
Hello? Who's that?
I'm Miss Lynn. My husband left it to me. He has passed away. I object to the dust and the smell that's coming over to me, to people in the subdivision by me and over the woods. They had actually stopped the school was coming by here one day because of the smell, the chemical smell. As a result of the smell, I wound up in the hospital with severe asthma attack, trying to breathe for three and a half days. And when I got home, it was about two weeks that I could not get out of the room, out of bed. And then I'm still having to do asthma medications twice a day and once in the middle of the day because of that stuff. You understand my rage?
Yes, ma'am. Do you have any additional objections? Ma'am, could I ask you?
It's an illegal business. They, it's a legal business. They've been over there operating for about a year almost and they have never had it zoned. That's illegal.
Yes, ma'am.
You need her name.
Is that you, Ms. Zettler?
No.
You're welcome.
Ma'am, could I get you to state your name again?
Ma'am, my name is Marcy Elizabeth Zettler. I live at 1092 Stillwell Road.
Thank you.
Georgia, it's ours there. 31329.
Thank you, Ms. Zettler. Got anybody else? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment discussion from the board. I mean, for me, this is tough.
I think the problem we're having is with the businesses already operating, not the, this gentleman's business.
Well, that's what they're complaining about. So this was, I mean, William Webb, that's Billy Webb, I mean, they've owned this property forever. I think Billy and Terry Cornwell wanted to work on some farm tractors and, and they came up here and got the B2 zoning for a, a small tractor shop. Wasn't a whole lot to it. I have no clue about this dump truck business. Obviously, semis, you know. Yeah, it is. Eight to 10, I guess, a day or possibly 16 a day. I mean, out on Stillwell Road, I mean, that, that is a lot. My, I, for me, my biggest concern is we approved a transmission shop at Stillwell that with, with a lot of these exact same rules and specifications years ago. And they grew and grew and it was a problem. And I know the guy, he's a friend of mine, but it was a huge problem because he wasn't supposed to have but 10 cars on and he ended up with 100 or, you know, they were everywhere. So, you know, this kind of thing, you know, I, I don't think we need to, no, nothing against you, Ms. Donnie, but I, I don't think the, you know, our rezoning department doesn't need phone calls every day saying there's 11 trucks over there, you know, I mean, so, you know, policing the world. But, but at the same time, I do know, I mean, there is a huge need for places to work on, on, on big trucks. I mean, no question. So I would like to hear some comments from other.
Sure. I, I mean, I mentioned it. My concern is I just can't get a feel for how the site's going to be laid out. I think with a condition that's this potentially intense to the adjacent neighbors, I just have to see more of a site plan to really understand what's going on and understand, you know, how the site would lay out to really be able to make a determination to on that aspect.
It's going to take some serious money to create a 30-foot vegetative buffer around seven acres.
And that, that to me is just one, one piece of what I would expect would have to be happening on that site to make what the use is that I'm hearing. Otherwise, there will be a lot of the same concerns from neighbors of dust and stuff like that, so.
They'd also have to put a road in on the B zoning instead of, they're using a agricultural piece of property to access a.
Well, if he's going to put a bu, a vegetative buffer around, he's going to have to get the road on this.
Yes.
Inside.
It's going to be a, a big expense.
Seems like he's just compounding the problem that already exists and I'm surprised Code hasn't caught that business operating back in there.
You have anything to say?
All right, if there's no further comments, questions, I'll call for a motion.
I think I'll make a motion to deny for now until we can figure out what's going on next door, I guess.
I have a motion for denial. Is there a second for denial?
Oh, second.
Mrs. Zipper, second is that? All those in favor of denial?
Unfortunately, yet.
Any opposed to deny? Motion carried by all. Now, Mr. Donnie, this does not mean this is dead. This just moves to the county commissioners with, okay. This is merely a recommendation. And obviously.
The same side too, you know, because it's my business. I don't want to risk my business for something.
Yeah, we're trying to help you.
And obviously, you've heard a lot of questions and comments. You're going to hear the same at the county commissioners. So hopefully you'll be prepared and, you know, you might win them over.
I, I was all for you until we got some of this going on and, and I'm familiar with the transmission shop and I live right up the road too, so, and I, and I'm an automotive shop owner too. So I'm, I'm for you 100%. I don't want to work on diesels, so you can have them, but. Just get some of this other issue straightened out up there.
Item 10 of the public hearing for D.R. Horton requests a variance from section 6.1 to eliminate the sidewalk requirements for 136 Ramsey Way located at Ramsey Landing subdivisions on R1. This is the fourth district.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Mr. Thompson will recuse on item number 10. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mike Hughes with Thomas and Hutton. I'm here on behalf of D.R. Horton. And we are looking for a variance to the sidewalk requirements within the code. This neighborhood was built in 2005 and I don't know quite whether it was just the time or the zoning was different, but the cross-sectional roads that were done, that are in the plans that were approved by the county, don't include a sidewalk. And if you look at the way the site was graded, there are very steep side slopes that go down Ramsey Way into Cabbage Lane. And so it's completely cut into the sides of the, of the properties and makes it extremely difficult to get a sidewalk to go within that section of the property. So the goal would be to loop around at that location, cross the street and have the sidewalk loop back around. The property across the street also does not have a sidewalk for similar reasons. So that's the reason for the, the requests.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Sure.
First comments from the board this time. Ms. Teresa, do you, what, what was that we were first looking at? Was that?
This is the current conditions. So there is a sidewalk up to the very edge of the property line and it stops abruptly.
What is this? This?
That's the covenant.
That's the subdivision covenant?
Oh, yeah. The circle there is the section of the subdivision covenants that explicitly excludes a number of lots from sidewalks. And that is, that is fine. It is not a county ordinance. And at the, as far as we know, no approval was sought or granted to kind of ratify this at the time. We don't, we don't know that it was. We have no records of that. So sidewalks were built in other, in front of other homes there. And now that the subdivision is building out, you know, this has come to our attention. So when building inspectors are out there inspecting new homes, they're seeing that, you know, sidewalks are not being put in consistently and we were, this covenant was shown to us and the HOA and the property owners are abiding by this covenant, but the county is not under an obligation to abide by it. The county certainly can consider a waiver to the subdivision requirements for sidewalks and that is what we're here for tonight. The applicant, application is for one, it's for one home, for 136 Ramsey Way. There are going to be apparently other homes that are affected in the same way. So we're not considering those tonight, but it is a fact that there, there are other homes that are going to be in this, or there are other home sites that will be in the same predicament. We can't really speak to what the plans were, approval process of the plans at the time in the early 2000s. We haven't seen anything in the files to indicate a, a waiver was granted, but, you know, that's not to say a verbal waiver wasn't granted. So staff have looked at this and while we're not topographical experts by any means, we have seen that there are sidewalks, I mean, there's a sidewalk coming up right to the property line with 136 Ramsey Way and we're wondering why it can't just continue. It's not curving off to the road the way it's supposed to according to the, the covenant. So there's a problem with that too. If, if pedestrians are attempting to use the sidewalk with a stroller or, you know, a kid on a scooter, they're going to come to a very sudden stop there with no way to, easy way to get to, you know, additional pavement. So that's a real problem.
And D.R. Horton did also build that lot that you see where the sidewalk then stops. And on the other side of the, the roadway, the sidewalk also turns. And I think they are going to have to take out a section of curbing and turn it 90 degrees to then cross the street to get to the sidewalk that's on the other side.
Yeah, I think there's a photograph of that in your packet that, that.
So 136 Ramsey Way is one of these lots in the red circle. Is that correct?
It is. It's lot 141. So, yeah, it's lot 141. It is listed there. Under the word sidewalks, you see 141. So it is one of the lots that was expected to be excluded from the sidewalk requirement or was not, you know, anticipated to have a sidewalk. And that, again, is, is not something that, that, you know, the current development services staff knew anything about until it was, you know, our inspector said, you need a sidewalk and we were told, no, we, we don't need a sidewalk because our covenants don't require it. So that's what we're here to resolve really, whether sidewalks can be installed on this slope. We looked a little bit online to see examples of sidewalks on slopes and, you know, here's a couple of examples. Obviously, this sidewalk at the top is flat, but the, but the driveway is heavily sloped. And then on the lower picture shows a retaining wall. So there, you know, there's, the, the way to handle it is to put in a retaining wall and, you know, that way everything is nice and flat.
You better have your car in, you better have the brakes on when you back out that road.
It's a great skateboard.
You better trust your mechanic. So just to be clear, we're only talking about lot 136?
This evening, yes.
This evening. So I guess what was the mindset behind building that sidewalk? Why was that sidewalk constructed?
Up to that point?
Yeah.
Well, I think part of it was specifically to, they were following the ARB or the covenants of the neighborhood. And I think the, the one had the sidewalk. The other part I'll say is that as you go towards cabbage, the grade stays steady. The road slopes down pretty steeply and I think the road was designed to go down to try to bench between. So after cabbage, those lots on the opposite side of cabbage fall off very quickly. So I think they kind of split the difference when they drew, designed cabbage to take it halfway between the hill. So if you actually go around cabbage, it is very, the homes are very high on one side and the ground falls streep, extremely steeply on the other side, so.
So I guess they didn't realize they were building a sidewalk to nowhere? I mean.
Well, I think that one, if you look at it, there is, they built it on the other side and I think they did intend to cross the street right there. And I don't know if there's a picture.
Yeah, actually, if you want to step back, it does show it. This photo shows the, the sort of abrupt, but across the street, you can see how it curves down.
So they will have to take out that section of curb, turn it 90 degrees and have the crossing be at that, that location tied into the other side.
Any further discussion at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? I mean.
How many, how many are we opening up to, to, to not have sidewalks after we approved this one for not having sidewalks?
I could say along Cabbage, there's, there's a block, there's, there's a cul-de-sac road that comes off of Cabbage, and I would say there are probably about eight home sites that will be extremely difficult, probably more difficult than this one. Um, partly because the power, if you can imagine, this, this, the road is, is cut down into this hill. There's probably an eight to ten-foot bank that it goes up to. They ran the power three feet below grade, three or four feet below grade, but up on a hill, ten feet in the air. So, we've also got underground utilities that are kind of wedging us into this place that if we were to then run the sidewalk, you're, you'll have the challenges. So, there are a couple more that it'll certainly be, and again, I think they're even.
Ms. Teresa, does the existing sidewalk need to be extended to the curb? Is, or is that something we're not looking at now, or?
In order, okay, so, the covenants indicate that that's how sidewalks.
Don't care about the covenants.
No, I know, but it looks like on this photo that, uh, this photo, that, that is what happened across the street, that it got curved down to the street. We don't, we weren't consulted on this, um, i- in recent years anyway, so we don't, we didn't have any input on the design of the sidewalks, and I'm not sure what the engineering solution to that would be, and we can ask the county engineer to weigh in on that. But our ordinance basically, you know, requires sidewalks, and if that's impossible, then in, in, in current subdivisions that come before us now, we work through that at the, at an early stage so that we all know what the expectations are, and if, if a sidewalk variance is, is appropriate, that is granted. Uh, more often than not, it's not granted, but that just depends on conditions on the ground. So, the, you know, staff's recommending denial simply because we don't, this, they're, they're, looking at the photo, again, not, not an expert here, looking at the photo, we didn't see how, how it was impossible to extend the sidewalk since it seems like that particular sidewalk that's on the photo on the left, um, could easily be extended. The grades seem to be similar.
Would the, uh, county ever take over maintenance on these roads?
The county does not take over maintenance, certainly on sidewalks. These are private roads, so the county has not been asked to take over the roads. But we would not take over maintenance of sidewalks regardless.
Just, you know, specifically where it turns. I think the reason they did that was because the neighbor, there's, there was one house in this whole area. It's a really beautiful house, um, but they couldn't, you can't put a sidewalk in front of that home because it's already built and it's already completed, so you can't run it really in front of their property, so I think they just turned it ninety degrees, which, again, lines up with what they're proposing here, but it is in front of an existing residence, which is why they couldn't carry further.
Is any further discussion, any further questions? No one else to speak. Um, I'll close public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Hughes. Any questions, comments? I mean, I'm. I don't disagree with, uh, staff. I mean, I see a sidewalk that looks, I'm no engineer, but it looks like it could be extended, but then, um, you know, we've sat up here and listened to a lot of people want variances for sidewalks, and, you know, it's hard to not, to give one person permission and not the next, um, or, or, but, I mean, this is a, I mean, if the county's not taking over these streets, I mean, I guess will it ever? I mean, or will this forever be maintained by that association, I guess, the streets? Is that how this works?
I mean, as far as we know, yes, we have not been asked to take over the streets, and, and if that were to happen, we would, you know, do an inspection and determine whether we were able, you know, willing to take them over. That's not on the table necessarily. But that doesn't affect the sidewalks. We would not take over the sidewalks.
I don't know. I mean, it kind of changes it a little bit for me.
It does for me, too. Me, too.
You got any comments, questions?
All it has to do is come down and touch this, uh, drain, this little trapezoidal drain at the very, that, that sidewalk needs to be just extended down. That stop sign obviously is in the way. It just needs to connect to that little sewer drain right there to satisfy the code?
I guess, I don't.
Well, uh.
Then take a, a, a turn and go down that side of the property, is it?
This is on a corner, so.
It'll run the entire length of the property?
It would run the entire, yeah. In, in the ideal world, we would expect to see a sidewalk running all along the roadway.
Perimeter.
You can see, this is a good image of the lots that you're gonna see challenges along pretty much until you hit back where the, the grades start to soften up. Where, where D.R. Horton has done all the lots, kind of going towards the one section of the street, going towards the north, or I guess, I don't know which direction I'm at, but if you go to the bottom of the screen, they've done sidewalks all through there, but as you get towards that really steep slope, it's, it's a real challenge. All the way around the corner, but having mentioned it, this is just for the one lot, but there will be challenges on the other ones as well.
I don't know. I've been.
I think he makes you have the variance.
I've been very opposed to issuing variances for sidewalks, but I do feel a little different about us and the county that.
I have too, but most of them's been subdivisions at the county.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, call for a vote.
All right, uh, call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve the variance, I have a second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think I'll second.
Second, Mister Zipper, others in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, Mister Hughes. Item eleven, public hearing for Dennis Trotter, his agent for Krista Secondr, requests to rezon two of twenty-three point thirty-two acres from R. One to B. Two to allow for the future development of a Dollar General store located at thirteen sixty-nine Ebenezer Road. This is the fourth district. Is Mister Trotter or Representative for Mrs. Secondr here?
Mister Trotter's on Zoom.
Mister Trotter's on Zoom.
Yes, I'm on, and my, our associate, Holten Brinson, is on too. Just been had, having the majority of the conversation with, uh, planning staff.
Good evening, sir.
Hey.
We're good. Uh, can you tell us about your plan?
Yeah, so, uh, this is a, a new, new trade area for us. We'd, we'd like to pursue this, this year at, um, at this new traffic circle. Um, we've got some existing commercial zoning at that circle, and, uh, we'd like to petition and rezone a couple of acres here for, uh, proposed, uh, Dollar General store. This would be a, um, our, uh, slightly larger, um, format store called a Dollar General Plus, which basically means it's more tailored toward, uh, food items, almost exclusively towards food items. So, uh, more fresh foods, more frozen foods, more food in general, uh, really just to serve the, you know, the, the, the daily, um, daily needs of the, of the immediate trade area around there that's, you know, clearly growing. Um, and it's not meant to, our stores are not, you know, not there to replace everybody's, you know, monthly trip to, or weekly trip to Kroger or Walmart, um, or Publix, but we are there for, you know, fill-in trips and the smaller, um, smaller baskets, and, um, I think that the, uh, look like this trade area has good, has good separation from our other stores and, um, uh, and, and have worked with staff to, uh, come up with a, um, site plan that, that, uh, has addressed some questions as well as a, a building design, uh, has addressed some staff questions as well, and, and, uh, happy to answer any other questions y'all have, too.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions, comments at this time?
Seems a good idea.
Ms. Teresa?
We do have visuals, and as soon as, um, as soon as the applicants are not speaking, we can maybe switch to that, and then you can see what we're talking about here.
All right.
All right. So this is the location. It's at the corner of Ebenezer and Longbridge Road. That star approximates where the proposed, the retail establishment would go. It's near Rain Dance to the west. It's, it's across from the school. Uh, this is a site plan, so as you see, there's access from both Longbridge Road and Ebenezer Road. Uh, Ebenezer Road's a state road, so they would be working with, uh, Department of Transportation on encroachment there, and then Longbridge is, is county road, so they'd be working with our depart, our Development Services Department on access there. The site plan shows the proposed layout of, this is a rezoning, so this is not a sketch plan. This is the rezoning, so this, you know, this is not set in stone, but this is the proposed layout of the site. We did talk to Mister Trotter then about facades. The application did mention they proposed, you know, variations on the, on the facade, not just a metal building, so we asked for more information and samples, and these were the samples of some recent, uh, projects that they've completed. So there's, there are options for making an attractive addition to the area, uh, one with the, uh, the Hardy plank and the, this looks like stone, yeah, stone, and then a brick exterior. So there's some options there, and we can continue to talk about that. Uh, basically, the, the site is going to be just a small portion of the overall tract of land, and just for some context, that green area between Rain Dance and, and the proposed site is, is wetlands according to the National Wetlands inventory. So not only will the, the retail store be in the corner over here by the roundabout, and, and therefore fairly, you know, distant from the residential structures, but there's also wetlands. So there's a, there's a nice built-in buffer there, but of course, there will also be a thirty-foot vegetative buffer on the site itself, too. So it'll be secluded there at the corner for the time being. There's, there's really not a lot of development right there. I'm gonna show you the zoning map because surprisingly, there is, uh, commercial zoning across the street. There's not, doesn't appear to be a business operating there, but there is, uh, commercial zoning across the street. There's residential zoning all around. Uh, there's ag residential. There's a school or institutional use there to the southwest, so at this time, there's not a lot of commercial activity there, but then the idea is to provide groceries to folks who are a little distant from grocery services.
All right. Thank you, Teresa. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Joan Bell. I live on Ebenezer, about a mile north of that, uh, roundabout, and I am a fan of Dollar General. I go to the one that's four miles from that roundabout, and I really am against this proposal. I don't think it's needed. Um, one, you have the Dollar General that's four miles away. There's also a food mart a little less than a mile down Longbridge Road for, I guess, emergency purposes. The school, it's seventeen hundred feet that roundabout to the elementary school, and anybody who's been on Ebenezer Road during school drop-off or pickup knows what the traffic is like there, and it's horrific. And actually looking at that drawing now to see where they would have the entrance exit, it's down by the school, so I'd be concerned about that, too. This whole thing made me read your comprehensive plan, the twenty twenty-four plan. Whoever wrote that, it's very well-written, I think. Um, I think this is very inconsistent with what's said in that plan. It's so close to the entrance to Old Ebenezer and the church. It's less than a mile to the boat ramp to Ebenezer Creek. I don't think we need a Dollar General every five miles, so, um, I'd like to quote from your document. "From its Salzburger beginnings to its location between two beautiful rivers, Effingham County has the opportunity to share its unique historical and natural significance with future generations." I don't think this is a way to do that. I wasn't aware from the land use maps in that, uh, plan, it hadn't shown that that was commercial. There, there was other commercial zoning there, so I was surprised by that. But, um, the other thing in some of the documents that were proposed, there is a old house there from eighteen seventy-two. You guys are probably all aware of that. Um, that my understanding had was there was some interest in trying to move that, but it was determined that it's too far gone. Um, baloney. Okay, it's money, okay? It'd be very expensive, I'm sure, to try and move that. I get that. Kudos to the family for keeping that building there. Um, there are not many historic buildings in Effingham County. There are very few. Less than two percent, according to your document, were built before nineteen thirty-nine. Um, I would propose that if this gets approved, that somebody with a lot of money, uh, Dollar General, who's had billions in operating profits, be tasked with moving and preserving that structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, my name's John Schwartzkauf. I also live on Ebenezer, um, not too far from this proposed Dollar General. Uh, I really don't see any need for another Dollar General. We've got one at the corner of Fort Howard. We've got one on twenty-one in Springfield. There's the Texaco on Long Bridge. There's the Chevron at the corner of Ebenezer and twenty-one. There's the New Loves going in. We, we don't need any more. This is a nice residential area. I've lived all over the United States, and I've seen what growth does, and we moved to Effingham County specifically because it was Effingham County and wasn't gonna turn into another Garden City or Port Wentworth or Chatham County, and that's what I'm seeing. In the time that we've been here, it's uncontrolled development, and people move to Effingham because they want to live here because of the schools. I'd have no problem with seeing another housing development going in on that plot of land, but, um, a Dollar General, that close to the elementary school, that is gonna be a major cluster at pickup and drop-off time. Traffic already backs up to the roundabout, and then you throw a Dollar General into the mix. It just doesn't make sense. I'm sorry, but I, for what my opinion is worth, that's it. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mister Schwartzkauf. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? You got anybody on the phone? Mister Trotter, would you like to say more?
Um, well, I, I got one more out here.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm Kenny Woods, and, uh, I live, uh, right down Longbridge. Been there for about twenty-seven years, and, um, I oppose the Dollar General. We don't need another one. Um, traffic is bad in that area. Um, I got a lot of safety concerns, uh, with the school, and there's a middle school, a high school that's possibly coming. They've been talking about that for a while. Um, got the elementary school. It's all the traffic, and I just don't see why we need another one. We got one right down the road either way. Um, trucks already tearing up the roundabouts. We got one right down Fort Howard Road. The roundabouts already destroyed from trucks, so we don't need all that extra truck traffic. Not only that, we got, there's two, I know there's several trees you can see from the road. It's big oaks that's been there for probably a hundred years, and I'd really hate to see those disappear, you know? I mean, that's, took a long time for them to grow, and, you know, for someone to come in and just plow them down and put a building there that, that's not needed, I just don't see why we need to do that, you know? F and M is a beauty, beautiful place, and a lot of people want to come here and live, and we don't need to destroy it. I mean, there's several subdivisions in the area that's coming up, and, you know, we don't, we don't need no more. So, I oppose.
Thank you, Mister Woods.
All right.
Is there anyone else to speak? All right, questions, comments from the board?
So I see in our report here, Springfield Water and Sewer, Sewer Service Delivery Area, but we, we don't know from them about specifically, or do we know any details on it, like they have committed to serve it?
Yes, Springfield. There's a lot in your packets. Yes, Springfield, there's a letter in your packet, Springfield said they would be prepared to serve.
And then the aspect of the architectural controls, um, that's something that we've asked for, and it's gonna be a condition?
You know, that's not something our ordinance requires, but in the application, they did indicate they were prepared to go further, so we asked them for some samples, and they, we had a meeting, we had a Zoom meeting to discuss, uh, the options, and then they provided these two photos that are up on the screen right now. So that is, you know, it's, it's subject to continued negotiation and discussion.
I don't know, I mean, I, I, I agree with everyone that, you know, spoke against it, I mean, it's, 'cause I thought the exact same thing when I looked at it, but then, when I took a harder look, I mean, State Highway, which is Highway two seventy-five, I mean, and you look at the area, um, as far as the Sekinger family, I know they've owned this property a long time, and I mean, I guess they think that this is a viable idea, I, I, but I don't disagree that, I can't see where, why we need another Dollar General right now, but, um, you know, we, we, we are also talking about B two zoning, which is right across the street, I mean, we're, you know, it just, it just so happens that the Dollar General came to ask for the B two zoning, you know, the Sekinger family could have come and asked for a B two zoning themselves, and since there's B two directly across from them, I mean, it's kind of hard to say no.
To me, the B two, I mean, I'm not gonna comment on who the, in commercial use, it ends up being, with the exception, I would like to know how we, how could we, if we have the ability to make a condition that it has some additional architectural controls, um, but yeah, the aspect of the commercial use or the business use or not is, you know, the question, I mean, actually, looking at the site plan that's proposed, um, might wish it was a, you know, a bit, bit larger so we could plan access points, so that it's not just, these access points are only utilized just for this use itself, and, 'cause, you know, to be able to have some interconnectivity between the parcels, adjacent parcels, I think would be good, again, I don't know if that's something that we can ask for and work with us in, in the future, um, 'cause it is, there's a reason, they're wanting to be right there on the, on the roundabout, and, um, those access points serving just one use there will be, I just feel like it could be better if it served more uses in the future on that side.
Anybody else got anything? I call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff.
I have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Zipper, others in favor of approval. Any opposed, motion carried by all. Thank you to everyone that spoke, and this obviously goes to the county commissioners for final approval. Um, anything else, any other business to come before this board? I, I do have one question, Teresa, Brad, Eric, I mean, so, you know, like, we ran into some questions with the rural business, um, some questions with the line-side setback on towers, I mean, is there a way for us to move forward in getting these, getting some changes made? I mean, does that have to come before the county commissioner, I mean, how does that work?
What kind of changes, do you mean, to the ordinances?
Yes, ma'am.
We are currently in the process of revising or revisiting all of our zoning districts and our subdivision regulations and our overall development codes, uh, we've had, uh, one stakeholder meeting, one public workshop, stakeholder meeting is tentatively planned, another workshop will be advertised in the next few months, so there is opportunity for input, there's also opportunity to just, just, you know, there's always opportunity for you as a planning board to, uh, express your opinion to us, and we've made, we continue to make revisions, minor revisions, even though there are consultants working on the bigger project, and that's, that's, you know, it's always something that's possible.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think it's as simple as a recommendation on this rural business to strike that one sentence that, that combines, you know, that takes the inside and outside and puts them all together. Um, I mean, I feel the indoor and the outdoor should be separated, the, the way it's written, and then that second sentence kind of trumps that, I mean, that's what I'm talking about, you know, and it's also, I think it's as simple, I mean, I, I get, I get the tower discussion and all, but, you know, if I was adjacent property owner, I'd, I'd want it to lean however high that tower is, is how far I'd want it away from my property, I'm sorry, that's just the way I would want it.
That's the way I would want it as well.
So, like I say, I mean, I, I don't know how to move these things, I, I, I get we're rewriting everything, but, um, you know, some, some very simple changes is what I was referring to.
You, you are talking about changing the code, so it ultimately goes before the commission, it will have to be packaged as such, they'll have to have, I think, at least two readings?
Yeah, it'll have to come out before this board for a change.
To the, to the ordinance? No.
No?
No.
It always has to pass.
This board would make that recommendation to the commission, and the commission would take it under your advisement and either listen to you and do something, or perhaps disregard or go farther, it, it's really in their hands.
Do we recommend it at this meeting, or go to the commissioners' meeting and recommend it there?
Uh, we don't have a set process for this to happen, or the communication carried by staff from this board to the other board, uh, I would ask that you give us, uh, some time to see what that would look like and get some input.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else?
Uh, just back on the rural business one, I mean, I, I just think anytime we got a specific number in there that's, I mean, just think about logically, two thousand square feet, I mean, that's, what is that, there's room?
Yeah.
Right? Um, just, maybe we just make it based off of the use and what they're proposing to us, and we can avoid, like, an equestrian facility, I would have thought that would have been, that's why I asked the question about what's, you know, how big is the property, 'cause the girl would end up.
She had eight acres.
They're using the property for equestrian, right, so, that, that was just it, I mean, if there's something in there, I'd, I'd, let's clean it and clean it, it's best for us, so we don't have to then amend it to be fifteen hundred square feet for the next person or whatever, so.
It's tough whenever, I mean, it's tough whenever we, we have these things repeat, you know, repeat in the future, you know, we've seen that, because we don't get the little changes, and, and we deal with it again down the road, um, is what I'm trying to avoid, you know, when it comes up, take care of it and move on. Go further? Take care, Peter, thank you for coming, man.